Above the things them we go make salon no go before. Today, now the fifteenth day of the seventh month inside twenty twenty one. Freetown City Council not okay. Freetown City Council get the god draw. Freetown City Council get misunderstanding. So they ask the question, what in the up on inside City Council right now, I mean Freetown City Council? For say na political sabotage or na just administrative misunderstanding? Freetown City Council in responsibility boku. But one main responsibility we didn't get, now for take care of we city. We all can agree say, Freetown, city, twenty first century. I don't know more, now you picking, so you go make mud for him. But it difficult for make mud for Freetown as a city. Now mix some people and on the call see, let we find another place, we build a new city. People like can point finger, say then do on a Nigeria, Lagos now, then get Abuja. Make we do him, but hey, on our each other side it. So the one way we get, we need for take care of him. Why make we need for take care of him? Because right now, na patch patch we dey patch patch him. So the mayor get a responsibility, one for keep we city clean. Because Tugu say talk me, Freetown dirty. But other than the dirty him. And they will come with another program for can discuss that. But from where this administration begin? Freetown City Council can always get a spotlight. And the spotlight we can get, can make you one for wonder, can make you one for catch it, what's really going on? We remember, one time when we get spotlight? When I been during cleaning, for trucks not trucks. We know what in be come out today, at the end, we see then smile, then shake hand. This is not the first time with Freetown City Council and the chief administrator done they get issue. But this time around, he look to get body, because what in do? Over forty councilors them be get for sign a petition. Where they address this letter to the minister of local government. For say do ya, the chief administrator, they no want him. What in do, they outline boku tim them, we make them feel to say? The local government ministry for transfer, they not say let them fire him oh. They say make them transfer him. Because what in do, you know they make work go before, na the council. How we take no yesterday, because this time for be deal with yesterday, before salon go find in safe na the I read list. So now make we make ladies wait for us. About yesterday morning. Maybe now we pushed on campaign shop, because now so we people like you see? Now in the mayor of Freetown, take to Facebook, that was yesterday. And this, now waiting it tell we. It say, the mayor and councilors of Freetown, where they elect for serve the people we tap na Freetown. And then determine for do so. They elect them for serve the people them, we tap na Freetown and then determine for do so. It say however, their work is being sabotage with increasing severity. Then they sabotage their work tranga tranga one, as time they go, now so it they become tranga. It say in this one, they get negative impact pan the kind service we them for deliver. And the kind plan where the council get for transform Freetown. Yeah? It say indoor raised this issues with the Ministry of Local Government, boku boku term over the past three years. It say thirty day, thirty day, they not fix that issues, they were in the raise. For who's term, it say for the past three years. It say, the Freetown City Council councilor them, then the whole press conference last Friday. When I be the ninth of July. And then don't write to the Ministry of Local Government, where then they request immediate action. You want for wonder waiting at the immediate action? The immediate action say, then they ask for the immediate transfer of the chief administrator of the Freetown City Council. Inside the letter, where the letter had now, councilors of Freetown City Council, they put their address there. Twelfth July twenty twenty one, they say to the Honorable Minister, Ministries of Local Government and Rural Development, then put their address there. Well, the minister this morning been dead na nineteen twenty one. The first thing they ask him, but do ya, you don't receive that letter? He say no, he not receive her yet, that na be this morning, maybe, so tell you don't receive her now, who knows? But anyway, now this the letter say. He say we all we don't sign per this letter oh, they write to you so. Eh, who say we say, the chief administrator, where he name na Mister Festos Kala? Do ya, we na transfer him to another council with waiting with immediate effect, this na the letter na they give for you so. Then say sa, when me say, do ya, pa tamba lamina. As development, na the watch word, when na the word we the president eh, president bill they use. It say now so the councilors, the back of Freetown City Council, they then grip that word they be 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 one. Because then say say na they own dream. And then they put all the effort they committed for make this dream yeah, what in at the dream? Development, make it come to pass, who say na the Freetown City Council. They say but oh yeah, the chief administrator eh, in timbap tranga tranga one for kill this dream. For reason where we not go able to tell you, but so tell if you ask him, he go tell you. They say, we want for bring to you your notice, for say the chief administrator. We suppose for serve as advisor to the mayor. He don't malice the mayor. And he do him for eight weeks now, he don't malice the mayor. And the mayor, they on top in aid, pan position. They say, by willful, he don't refuse for sign some documents them. Where then documents then they, now he go help for push, what in the council and the municipality, they work towards. Look like say today I can't see that, don't forget me water, well I didn't I had today, but anyway, now we continue. Then say this chief administrator yeah, he don't create one kind situation. Where na divide and rule among the staff them. When me say, the mayor get in your people eh, the chief administrator get in your people eh, among the staff them oh. That's the waiting the councilors then write, no to me say oh. Ah ha, do ya, I dey read the letter for you, I dey interpret it for you pan creo, as best as I could, yeah? Now continue. They say don't create what in divide and rule among waiting the staff eh, they say and na the tranga tranga staff them oh. And they say, persistent insubordination. When me say, where the mayor talk, ah the mayor official. Where he talk, people and they, when they listen to the mayor. Where the mayor talk na Freetown City Council, people and they, when they listen to him. Because some people and say, then they na the camp of Uda, the chief administrator. This now waiting the councilors they say. And they say this kind behavior, this kind attitude inside Freetown City Council. It don't make the council not they run smooth anymore. They say it they can walk, ask and when it feel. That's na Festos Kala, the chief administrator, and so they say. And say they can walk, ask and when it feel. And he take instruction only. If chief administrator support such instruction regardless of whether a lawful decision. Or for the council. The chief administrator, the one they were then in camp oh, when they feel, and then they can walk. And now where the chief administrator talk, and then go do him, elect the mayor talk, they know they do him. So the councilor then say per this letter. Okay? They say, they attach a press release. Where they say, the continued suppression of progress na Freetown City Council. They said in the of the opinion and conviction, for say the chief administrator, he don't breach in responsibility. Where they under the Local Government Act two thousand and four. Eh, for say the local council chief administrator eh, in responsibility go be. He go responsible for implement all lawful decision of the local council. He go assist and he go advise the chairperson in the performance of in function. And at the mayor, he go perform such other function as the local council or chairperson go determine. And he go ensure for say the staff performance then, then they per standard. Okay? Then say, now this thing where I read for you so just now. When I, now he make the elected official then we don't take oath, we don't swear. Say then go seek the welfare of the citizens then. Hey, that's where they they get you, go get you now, okay, but now continue no more. Eh, alright, he say, now then we don't swear say eh, the welfare of the people eh. Then go make it come to pass oh. So now because of that, because this thing they ambug them, then decide for write and ask for the good office for transfer. Do ya, this chief administrator, for the sake of development, peace and sanity na Freetown. For transfer him for the sake of waiting, peace, development and sanity. They attach the names of the one they we sign, the councilors them. And then copy the letter, the Chairman Parliamentary Committee of Local Government. They also send out to Chairman Local Government Service Commission. They send out to the Director of Decentralization Secretariat, the Permanent Secretary Ministry of Local Government. The Director of Ministry of Local Government and Rural Development, the Chairman Local Council Association of Sierra Leone. And this letter, then be send him to the Minister of Local Government. The press release they, they write boku boku they, if you, if you follow, I will tell you if I don't see him. Eh, alright. You don't hear eh, this part for us. That have been yesterday. Would they bring to you, how we say they get him? Yesterday. Now so it been happen. Where the mayor of Freetown, then come for make the world know. Say this na the issue, we don't they go on na Freetown City Council. Trust social media. Before you know it. Audio begin for circulate. Who da talk na this audio, na the deputy mayor of Freetown. What? All what here I read to you so, now he will be hear you for us. Until the deputy carry it in young. You want for hear you wait he say, on I make we listen to the deputy mayor of Freetown. In young, per this thing we begin for unfold before we all hear eh.
Yeah, the issue there between the CA and the mayor. On signing of document with regard council. You see, all man who see, then are the corresponding officer of Freetown City Council. All documents and files of council, now he they receive them and forward to the mayor. The mayor comment and send for approval. Well, the C A refused for sign, just two document. Then two document he no give for sign because the mayor no make lay understand how the documents are they for call for.
Listen yeah, make you understand from the other side. It say, na two document, now in the chief administrator, now he call see, no give for sign. But now give a chance, let you explain fine for we.
And he no give for explain yeah, how the documents are they, how you about, you know involve on the project, all the projects that they know involve on. And I do not funding project with defeat fund money for support, for for implement on behalf of council. A fund defeat fund CRF for do them projects indeed. The one project, an internet project we can call iCloud. The other project, na transfer station, then station we then build build. Where they forget that, then try school and forget that lot to within the community, and then they will put him. Then later now, now they go take care and go, they call a transfer station. Then project indeed, and then get this case, where the C A say he no understand nothing about them, so he no go sign document. But other document, the way they happen at the council, he dey sign them. But then why the mayor look at and say, oh, the C A don't count the challenge against him. He go report to the party, say, the C A don't malice him for eight weeks.
Until they listen, the deputy mayor of Freetown, where the person they listen to, na Osman Kuruama, now na the deputy mayor. He claim say, the mayor of Freetown, go report the chief administrator to the APC party. Now na, no to me say oh, until they hear eh, ah ha, make you no can say just no, at Tigi Poli. He say he go report him, ah the party. Osman, continue sa.
He not talk to him, and the C A don't put the council to disrupt, and he don't make the council run again. And now they they see na SLPP, because they should do so, and for let enable walk, he walk there for him. So that, they go look at and say they would do nothing that the city, and that make the C A dey do so. So with that kind thing they, now make him only complain a party office. A non grumular accounts will take, but councilors they not get time for listening, and they because they know how things go. So with that they, he make, let the party feel say yes na true, na political business. So the party can inside quiz the councilors them, let the councilors then come together for make a a a vote of non confidence against the C A.
You hear eh, waiting the deputy mayor claim, na this audio. Say na political party, the APC, now he call you APC councilors then, then go quiz them. For make, they write that letter, where I read to you so just now. This is getting interesting oh, eh, now so incriminating, but now give a chance later on.
So, I believe at a meeting they, just because I said hmm, may not believe see that vote of non confidence for do. Not for make press conferences, and for engage the C A for us. Now we engage the C A, and understand why. Then after that, anything now we will note in the next word, they say they be then engage the C A. Well, maybe they engage, I know they they need the deputy mayor, I know they they no more no tell me. And they meet himself with the C, the mayor go call the party office, for love go there. You know if I bring attention my attention, na party, our party office tomorrow now, they call we tomorrow now, maybe he say for they call we, na party talk or go talk. For love go tomorrow, the voting we see, and the chief administrator, now I say but this case, not the case okay, and administrative court case this. So they put it in battery level, I tell them say, well, me no believe in making press conference, I not believe in do anything, I believe for engage the C A. Because I not believe for, I not to that line they, they say, well, me now for they pattern pass, we now me say therefore impeach me.
Okay, may I not see who say the deputy mayor in young, they write they say, they no want him oh. Because I don't know the reason behind this audio, but maybe he want help for throw light. Or maybe he want help for sweeten things, or maybe whatever it is, eh? So, what in insane I ah, say then say insert them for impeachment. But, he name not the para letter. Hmm, I don't know if he not be see that letter, there something, that meeting where the councilors then be make, eh, I don't know. But, um, Mister Osman sa, you name not the do, but anyway, continue for throw more light, let we know what in really happen. I don't know if really this case been supposed for go na APC party office, for made them go deal with on a party level. Or na the council and the local government council, and they then forbid go, like how they write the letter, but go count to all that. There are so many sides to this story that, I just want make you relax, take you the ginger beer, as we dissect them little by little, yeah? Continue sa.
Because we not support them, so this are the thing also, they never planned that impeachment they, for C C, therefore impeach me. And we don't do what, three years, six months now, we don't do so at the council, and left like six to nine months, for let we go. Six months for let we go. So if, then go this kind thing, I make a still afford until you let you explain now and eh. So the issue of the C A, made in three time, made they forget about the deputy mayor, deputy mayor no go nothing for those. That issue they were therefore include me, para kind thing they. So, at that, I think the case now eh, very clear. And they see eh, they say na SLPP, not to SLPP, na administrator. They say he no go to that council, no na SLPP, he can't dey the term where APC then have power. And the APC people eh, recruit them, and yeah, work them, work na 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 Tonkolili council, work na Poloka council, work na na Kono council. At Tonkolili council, they then promote a chief administrator, who is transfer can na Freetown. And all the one that they are doing in APC, ministers there, man, APC mayor, they say we go, he can dey. Before the mayor come, that man label work na SLPP let council, all the council work na APC council, they work. So if no work la work, they don't can at this time, they can get issue on the mayor. Let the mayor just fend way for let the team understandable and tell the C A, let him give work.
Let the mayor fend way, for make understanding there between he and the chief administrator. So that then go begin for work, you pick that side eh? Mayor, deputy mayor say, make you fend way. Make you and the chief administrator begin for work, because you look like say, he don't fend the way, for make he not get issue with the chief administrator. Now make on I go this talk na party office, and say no, no to party, he say, no to party, then for care and go. He say make you fend way oh, well, what what in I last word sa?
That's it, other than for can begin to put fit, for fit them a day for pull them, for who fit the deputy where they come, that's all the issue, I don't think see that na the issue now eh. So for that, another message I say, I for send to you, let you say for look at, see how you go discuss today, thank you.
Okay. Where eh, the deputy mayor, Osman Kuruama. Now he talk so, yeah? He don't give we in own side of the story. But this audio, I think he make can be full, that letter come out. What he make I talk so? Because he say then say don't para, now now now, they they try for impeach me. Unless you don't suicide and say the deputy mayor back for go, but me I not see that one day. I not see that one, then say the deputy mayor for go. So maybe somehow, some way, it be the fit for making it clear, wanted. So there I make I go talk, waiting at the thing. And make I tell the mayor say, make you fend way for make he and this chief administrator, then set to learn things then, may they not mix me name inside eh. But talk oh, he say eh? Then councilors the way sign that document. Hmm? The one they way sign the document, he say na coas then coas then a party office, then tell and say unah for sign. While this way I be they go on. Yes, alone, okay, okay there. While this be they go on. Now in the mayor, go back on social media. He want make we say this, let we know this. He said today, the fourteenth day of July twenty twenty one, I be yesterday, you know say na yesterday this thing. Begin kind of the spotlight for make we able for discuss and like how they do so. He say Anti Corruption Commission don't invite me oh, me fan bolem. For make I go answer questions them, where related to waiting the twenty nineteen audit report be fennot. Hmm, what a coincidence. Eh? The morning, he can say, C A for go, they write letter. In the afternoon, ACC say, madam mayor, there I can for spare, look I ask you few question. He say, why they not inform me about this specific thing where they go ask me about? Ah, ah where I say, me now part of one ongoing routine investigation, we get for do with the audit report in findings. Other core members them, where they na the FCC staff, including the chief administrator and the finance officer. Then be don't go there, and then be don't ask them question. How the mayor know? Okay, they seen a eight weeks now in there, or two not talk. So so tell anyone and they be don't go there, before that eight weeks there. So what in happen before this malice coincide? But anyway, now continue. It say for me, me own Ivanaki Sawyer, hmm. I remain committed eh, for cooperate with the Anti Corruption Commission. For ensure say, all outstanding audit issues, then clear them. Mm hmm, and so the mayor say. So, once this be they go on, ACC call them. ACC, now soon enjoy the call person. Hey, so if the mayor be say, yesterday in calendar full up, he not be able for go. Yes, so tell, he forbid na ACC custody. Eh, ACC, Anti Corruption Commission, then the work bobs, anyway. Hmm. Now continue. Because, we need for hearing from, hmm? We need for hearing from, the councilor them. Since, the deputy mayor tell we say, na coas then coas then for let them talk. Now we come with councillor. Eh? Of word four, four, four. Councillor Yunis sa, eh, yeah eh, I like you Peter back, whose word? Word four, four, four. Yes, Yunis sa, councillor sa. Tell we ba, what you tell ninety eight point one this morning, would you listen?
We all there are governed by the constitution, where to some extent, we get act them, where come up from this constitution, where they enact through parliament. The act spell I'm out clearly say, if somebody go against some of them rules, yeah, where they measure. We get for do with either you the council or the chief administrator, the we get for do with either you the councillor, the chief administrator, the mayor, you get right for let you talk on them issues and they. And I based on them grounds, then they will be see, law will make, will request from the public and equally so the central government, then they send this man, na other council, you get the right for advise this mayor. If this chief administrator don't sit down for almost eight weeks, you not agree talk to this mayor. To me, me they look at and say, this chief administrator, they sabotage this process of running the city council. If anything, the way the mayor go do way wrong, when infil say get knowledge for advise him, then you not agree for talk to him, something go wrong tomorrow. So they make you sit down, you know they agree talk to him for over many weeks.
There yeah eh, so this one match within the deputy mayor tell me, eight weeks, malice. Chief administrator, not to talk to the mayor. But the the part two I don't know no more, if the mayor in the talk to the chief administrator, maybe near answer him. Or you go say, how the bra for talk to the bobo? Well, for peace sake, but anyway, the chief administrator na ya, they say na he know they talk to the mayor. So I don't know if the mayor don't try for call the chief administration, you attention see, they need talk to me, but hey, I get to work there one for do. Or the mayor serve get you people eh, ah madam not talk to her, what you go talk to her for eh? Not talk to her, I go talk to her eh, now he sent him out, so left ah, let we teach a lesson eh? Anyway, eight weeks, then they then no depar this charm out, so sometime the chief administrator back say, he he he, if I get say na me they sign. Well, let we see, who that get the power inside this council? Then the people them, with their money, they for pay them, then they suffer. Hey, eh right, anyway, councillor Unisa, would you listen sir?
The later on I like to the central government and other body, they serve way, the part of council development one. When I be against different issues, I talk about the tricycle money, what's the N P people them, and on and one them. So take me through, what are some of the issue they wanna take and say this now, issue of concern, we make na the call now, for make them go transfer this N C A.
We don't get a situation, we are in the tax roof, or even they generate from here, when at the um property tax, ten billion can violation just to do shutdown. Nobody no can for tell you any reason, the chief administrator sit down, he not talk, he not comment, he not want do, so look.
This that one team force way point the chief administrator pa, say thing happen with property tax, he not talk nothing. And inside and say, the chief administrator one pa and work them, and for they advise the mayor. Alright, and say proper, that now waiting councillor Unisa say oh, mm hmm.
See now at all them tier way, but who they way involved, the leaving me would determine say, now you know what, before we all feel the people the way elect we tomorrow, for make sure say we deliver, we care go development at the doorstep. So you don't then go ask me tomorrow, what you don't do?
Eh, me I be wish for say, this now western area go wrong eh? Now 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 they this councillor been talk, this particular word we talk so, say then do one for the people them, because to me now they midi. Eh, and he said then do one for the people, let the people they no can ask them just now say, they not care development to their doorstep. But dear, who now who they na free term, almost development they don't care you now on a doorstep eh? Almost development, because they say this then they do one, because they wanna no can ask them just now. Na bete ye di una question, they wanna begin go ask them, na councillors there eh? Because say me, if na be the western area go wrong, I for be ask them, whose development, bing, who then count na me doorstep? Eh, I go ask them first, who's one they care go, na the western area, district their office in doorstep first. Because they go that so he cut to cut to take it na then though. Anyway, that left them one they leave, and they get a nice time over day, let we can first na free term city council, eh eh, what thing again sir?
They then transfer this man, then bring somebody who we will can work with, even though they na the dying minutes, but better late than never. Then tricycle here, where you they talk about, these are tricycles we giving to us by donors. The issue of cleaning the city, na the flagship program of this free term city council. And the initiator of this program, now no less a person who worship the mayor Ivanaki Sawyer.
Listen to in what's them oh, don't talk about flagship, and he don't talk who that they be in this flagship program.
If be a request for the tricycle, they help with over hundred and thirty five groups, where benefit from the tricycle here. Now the equal as who we use, for they do cleaning for we, now we ice our areas then at the municipality. With side them, who you go to map, you know say here very sensitive, for let people and they work a day and see what thing they happen. Or a good bridge to Le Vuma, then people there they do this work, they come on under rain, me I you know way ruin the car na free term. Then people there they make efforts for they clean this place, up to now, sir, they talk to you, going to two months. The mayor don't send the documents to the chief administrator, for sign them, this man no agree sign this document.
Okay, we know them guy the way they use the tricycle eh? Where they go up and down for clean, where the one they did on sweep, they don't get that, the one they did on pull the dirty, na gutter they don't get that. Now then they come for, can pack everything for care and go, na the transfer station there, eh, who they use good word then now na Saloon. Eh, na the dirty box, then the big dirty box, then they care and go there. They not pay there, they say, the chief administrator now in for sign, because them, that particular project they for now, it don't add defeat, na defeat they sponsor ah, so now then they give the pek pek pek. They not agree pay them. The one they they don't talk to the people they wanna go, they work no more, they pay you now, you know say now the C A, the C A way sign no more, go pay you now. Or wait, one for see let them strike, then begin to read the dirty na streets, then they say the mayor, now they work, now that turn they now, then go say, oh, now the mayor no de work, he no de work, or what thing? Or na the malice, now you make the pen no agree go to the paper, for sign, for make they wa, or the understanding like how the the deputy mayor claims say, the chief administrator not get understanding, but not to today then begin for sign for them people and they oh. Anyway, eh, councillor, continue.
The issue of the iCloud, this iCloud an internet process where be done a fund by diffid for make sure say we able capture some of property them, where they na this municipality, you understand? It don't come to a time where documents they way for sign, for let this thing continue for run, then send out to the C A, you no agree for sign them. Now, the area of these um transfer stations. A transfer station na a saw way, the city council through the help of diffid, being request for build, where they then ah eh different wards now, they would constituency there, then build them, where then tricycle there they collect dirty, then they able run for camp bombing. Mostly this twenty season in the distance, then they collect this dirty, go to na this closed transfer station. Where we own city council vehicle then ah go go, it take come, it bring can at the dump site, when at the main dump site, when at dummy.
Until the eh eh, okay, I want make you listen from in own part two, because all man they give back that today, listen yeah?
Bombing, then don't build any transfer station, and at different wards them, for let this C A sign a signature with N T R. Things they do for request for security, electricity, and all that, you also go make a some input, for let N T R begin run. Then send this document to the chief administrator, you no agree sign them.
So the allegation here you don't make against the C A say, the C A they do this and this. These particular documents later one I don't put for send out to the central government, now all the councillors then at the free term city council, come together and sign this document.
The law say two third, out of forty eight, to the give over forty, who don't sign this document for make sure say reach them. But all the one the way are aware of this, who all unanimously agree, and sign this, for send them say, that this na we position towards the C A.
You don't hear eh, because the deputy mayor say, na coas then coas them, in say, all man way are aware about this. Now over forty of them, now they sign, he say they all way aware of this unanimously, one to one eh, they agree say, this now we want. Mister Chief Administrator should be transferred, he say now they agree for themselves. Hmm, okay.
All these gentlemen, they not disturb we, for do what you want do, they not disturb we for render the service way Fritonians they vote for we have for.
Let you not disturb them, for do what thing they want for do, let you not disturb them, for do the service way Fritonians they put them they for. Fritonians, who now not they listen safe?
For make sure say, the one the way they pay them tax them to we, who for replicate this tax in a form of development back to them. Let you not deter that development, they let you not hold on to we, let government taken from this council since. Not only the only council this we get, we get up to sixteen councils, you were able for work there.
When I don't send this letter now to the central government, government no watch inside this document, then they not agree for transfer the C A. They still left on a council, what thing go be on a position as the councillor, or the when at the free term city council?
The issue of the government not agree, yes, now a plan B, where would they look at them, but me believe say government agree, because wanting about governments, na collaborative effort, waiting who they from the local government side, so then waiting at the central government for push development, if they not agree, who don't tell who people they are out there, say, this man not ready for hold on to development them. Who don't do a press conference, who don't send letters, and who know they only limit this letter to the minister of local government. Who they send out to other relevant authorities, then let there we are, if then decide not for agree, then say, let development not take a free term. Based on reasons best known to them, we go take another action, who believe say it will be appropriate, and who go pronounce on when it's enriched.
That's now councillor Unisa from word four, 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 lovely, now in be the talk on behalf of incumbent councillors them, we sign the document. You don't hear you waiting in say, as opposed to waiting the deputy mayor say, as opposed to waiting the mayor say, okay? Well, yesterday, when the deputy mayor, in audio begin for go around, health as health eh, all man they share. Because you know say now, now by camp. Today, the mayor of Friton field to say, in need for address that issue para audio. So now so the mayor say, he say me, I don't listen to one audio where then the shape shape eh from yesterday, na social media. Where the person we talk there, he he he, okay, the person we talk there, you not call the person the name oh. But me I go just help you, the person we been talk there, na the deputy mayor, Ousmane Kooma. He say where the person we talk there, talks say, the Friton City Council Chief Administrator refuse for only sign two documents, because he not aware of the project hmm? He say, because of the kind thing where this audio don't cause, so I don't take permission. I make a share with you now, the official minute of the meeting where we be all Monday, July twelve, with F C D O. He saying now the one they did then be they call diffid before, thirty thirty, MOPED and FCC and the project implementing partners, where the one then there, na I G C, C I S and G O R. It's a specific reference eh, inside this particular minute, why I don't share for now so? Then talk there about the online subscription for the iCloud hosting of MOP tax. He say the new property rate system, and to the requirement for me could buy tractors them and trailers them for the operation of the waste transfer stations. He say but who documents them, you not agree for sign them, who then they talk about, the chief administrator, including the June payment for then one day where they ride that tricycle eh? He say bo, who now member, then they wake early, early, early morning for sweep the streets of Friton. Now then say say na the two heroes and partners in this we journey, who they felt for transform Friton. They no deserve for make them be victim from this palaver. Hmm, okay, although the timing of me interview by A C C yesterday now be an interesting meetup, he say coincidence, where he just meetup like a that. He said the audit queries discussed were totally unrelated to waiting I write so. Then I waiting get for do with me and the C A. And the queries not give me any cause for concern, that's now the mayor. You don't go FCC, and waiting up in there, no get any cause for concern. One side way I like para minute day. He say, we notice for say three projects, um where FCC don't take. With input from partners them, during the planning of the workshop, who be all for design transform Friton. As the project design be complete and implementing partners them, then be share, share with them all the necessary document and the subsequent reporting with FCC, the UK government documentation, you go fend them, then give the link. In line with waiting the United Kingdom government rules want. No give you read all now and day for you. But until you say, yeah eh, waiting a talk about the one them, where they not pay. I nothing see, but then can say we two elephant, then they felt na the grass, now they suffer, not also, now who they see so? Anyway, we talk and go, we talk and come, somebody get work na ya, who that that one day? The Minister of Local Government, he get work, Tambala Mina. So ninety eight point one call them up this morning eh? And I saw the conversation they go, they allow listen them ba.
Good morning.
Yes sir, good morning, you can talk a bit louder please.
Yeah, they talk as loud, as loud as I can.
Um, we just play an interview, Osai councillor Unisa Kamara talk about the letter where over forty councillor then from the Friton City Council writes to your ministry, who said they request for let the ministry transfer the chief administrator at the Friton City Council. You can first start for confirm if this letter don't reach na your desk.
Well, I would inform ah Saloon people then say, I not receive that letter yet.
Okay, number one, he say he not receive the letter yet. Dear councillor Unisa, who that who now give that letter? Who now just come share them na social media, for make we see I will begin for talk like how they talk so? Because the minister say no get that yet too, but until that be this morning, I hope say during the day, who now don't try all possible means for make the minister get that letter eh? Or do I have anybody na the minister in office be don't collect that letter? Where she don't para, or he put her under ledger, or he put her under file, or he put her under the computer. Who now pull alone, I go give that minister, yeah? Okay, he say he not get that yet, because he not receive something na social media say he look ah, why for look ah? I beg, I like he name did eh, you never know something na propaganda say, let we continue yeah, you not get that yet yeah?
And as soon as I receive the letter, I will respond appropriately.
Alright, wh- once you know receive the letter yet, based on the interview where councillor Unisa Kamara talk, eh highlight certain issues them, where make, he said then decide for write this letter to you, some of their issues there so now the non cooperation, where then they get from the chief administrator and the Friton City Council, where according to them, eh they ambag them work. What thing go be you take on this concern from the councillor them?
Well, very surprising to me, for say, people that already use procedures, and the right um um instruments for forward whatever grievance then get, uh now they institutions.
Ba, bam, now the one word then the force, they not use the procedure, and so the minister say. Even though you not get the letter yet, but eh eh councillor Unisa, eh eh, and a ninety eight point one eh? So in say, he want for respond, number one, he say they not use the right procedure hmm? What thing again? Hmm, what in again?
Uh, Friton City Council, uh now it counts one of the twenty two councils that waiting at this country. Um, obviously, if the councillor don't can a radio already after they not write the letter. Then he actually mean for say, you know, they respect the instruments them of, of, of governance.
You don't hear he, councillor Unisa Kamaya of word four four four. The minister say he not respect the instrument of governance, because what he do? He write letter to the minister. He not wait for make the minister reply, he not wait for making, waiting, they go on waiting, now they go on for know if the minister don't receive him or not. He say can a radio for can tell, we, we elect them. So, he not go through the procedure. Okay oh, Mister Minister sir, continue.
If you don't write letter to the minister, the state clearly say, now so 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 so, they happen now Friton City Council. You get for wait and wait let the minister respond, then you go by extra trial by media.
Wait make the minister respond before you go by trial through the media. Ah now we work, now they pass so, now also, when I make the minister not glad he. See councillor Unisa, you don't go, you don't go talk. In fact, if he been talk, say he not talk oh for be still talk, because what he do, the letter is there. Because what he do, the deputy mayor make audio, it's out there, so we still gonna talk oh. But anyway, this is then you aid, councillor Unisa, you now you go ninety eight point one go talk. So the minister don't put on a you aid, you force, wait, now continue.
And trial by media, you know they help anything at this country.
Trial by media, eh, till we don't go talk on our media way, who can see done how they talk, they discuss ah, you know they help nothing at the country. Eh, yeah, salon, so anything oh, alright, forget it, ah, forget.
One thing I go want for say, uh, I've been done previously done say, Friton City Council. We need for conduct an administrative investigation, oh, still they work on currently.
We need for conduct an ev- this investigation, yeah, this administrative investigation. Anything where issue happen now F C C, eh, now so the minister they say. Anything where they go, go happen there, then go conduct, but what he they hold then say for they not conduct a eight thirty day. And you know left better yet too, if then go according to the accordance of the constitution. They don't do three or six months, now six months later become a four years then for do. Uh huh, according to the constitution, so now six months left, so what's then they want do, now what they don't come out? Okay, so minister continues ah, but yeah, please sir, try make you do that administrative investigation. Because now so you can talk, as they make peace, everything back go on fine, the way they go work, I say back, I go get for do them, who still now they do ah? Continue.
When I go remember say, uh, not too long ago, I've been get for make that pronouncement there.
Now true sir, and also, one other thing back, if you don't talk and back sir.
There are issues in Friton City Council that go far beyond. Within the councillors them, if a tour waiting and they try for raise at this point in time, we cannot get to it. We need for look at all the issues then squarely, for make sure say we deal with them. But one thing again, what I go want for say is that in all of this, development is very important. After politics don't pass, election don't pass, now development we concentrate on.
That is so true, after politics, after election, development as who? Sierra Leonians, as Sierra Leonians. As salon people eh, one people not to as A P C, not to as S L P P, but as Sierra Leonians for develop. We continue after election, but oh yeah, continue sir.
The chief administrator of any council, a gather responsibility for look after the administration of the council. Why the mayors or the chairpersons, then they provide the political leadership for let them move than they go before.
Until they then to work, yeah, they then to work eh, alright.
So the chief administrator get responsibilities, now the council, the council leaderships have get responsibilities that the council. And any side, the law, now anger, anger for taking course. If at all, now situation who they look at, where go be for say, the chief administrator not satisfy with certain things the way they happen. Then obviously, he therefore use the law, eh, he go complain as well, say this is not correct for me.
Okay, the chief administrator therefore use the law and he go complain as well for say, this not correct for them. If I maybe they ask the question, what you go face in my next question for ask ah? Say, okay, even though you not receive that letter yet, do you ah, the chief administrator, he don't can complain to you sir? Now don't there for be ask come oh, but anyway, continue sir.
So let we left down there, I no say yes, and then, and he here he say yes, eh eh eh, the kind he tell me to right now see. Uh, the council don't write to, to the minister, I do wait for that letter there, I go look at the letter and I go respond appropriately. But above that, there is a pending investigation, administrative inquiry for Friton City Council.
So that was I go wait for this um particular letter, let take you mind back. So some of their issues there are, so where don't they happen at the Friton City Council? Especially with the C A and the councillor them and that of the mayor's office. Issues them done they happen there for a very long time, when they draw the attention of the ministry. And where we make the mi- your ministry be decided, then they set up an administrative investigation. With all their issues there are, so where according to the councillor them, they amble developments and then various words them. You not think say as a minister and attempt this for let you hasten with the investigation and come out with a report?
Well, obviously, they're not, they're not in how we do, uh, administrative investigation. Now thing we therefore be very thorough and a process. Initially, we therefore decide exactly what we therefore look into, and we don't stay clearly waiting at the T O R. Of the investigators that we therefore go inside Friton City Council. So we there in the process, eh, we will try for do that very, very soon. For make sure say, we look at all the issues that is Friton City Council, for make sure say they get. A, a good working relationship that the council eh move development go before.
We don't mark and don't, today the fifteenth day of July twenty twenty one, the minister say very, very soon. If he be said then go settle this, don't they not do that administrative investigation? Don't other palaver can don't they go, they come back can tell we say, then go do administrative investigation then. Hmm, Mister Minister sir, we go get for give you name. Ah, now until don't tell we say un a don't pick the team, so un a don't almost do ah now, because you say un a don't pick the team. Then un a, even though no wait soon ah, they go for go investigate, we not go one for here he just know. That same one they say, oh, they can't go investigate oh, ah, we go give you name, okay, continue.
Accusation they were done they come out from the Friton City Council, especially where centered around the issues there are so. Where get for do with non cooperation from one person to another. Most people they point at say, now politics, now the problem, now the council. You as the minister, where they supervise this particular council, you don't ever sense anything like politics say don't be distraction from the work?
Well, I think there's a lot of people that will be the judge, uh, clearly, then we all look at the issues then squarely. And then we, then we be the tactics reunions, and then we look at the issues. For let we get development that any nation, uh, we therefore behave as realigners. Competence realigners who take the responsibilities then very seriously. And look at the critical issues then, we will therefore deal with, uh, now with various entities or various departments they will do. Politics is, uh, one thing, the time they for politics, and after that, we all go for work together. For law make sure say we hear the contribution before. And as far as me concerned, now that way they, we they look at them, now each and every council, because we get twenty two councils now this country. If we get one council where they raise so many issues, uh, a lot of times that we the try for deal with them. We need for go inside there, for law we know exactly what in there are the issues, because now teeth and tongue now they make palaver.
Thank you very much, um, Tambalamina.
One for tell, here the democracy, thank you, when I through them, we all able for listen to, um, the minister, okay. So now twenty two council in there, but you get this one grand council. He said now teeth and tongue can jam. Then get for do administrative investigation, he say it it take ten, now process. And not just boom, they happen so, but now process, it it take ten, okay? But he don't tell they here that what they, so we really, really want. This administrative investigation for go on, we want that. If not, we go say the minister now talk and not do, I de name that one they oh, I talk and not do. Okay, eh, you know allow you that name there, but anyway, I don't take me time. At least if you not be really know what in they go on, you know USA you team up now for this Friton City Council issue. Eh, so make a come with Usman Tholi, make query, how, ingo break and down for we? Welcome on board Usman Tholi, you get the platform sir.
Okay, uh, thank you very much Triple A for having me. And, uh, you do a very good job. You really break this town, this thing for we to the lowest level. And for the benefit of the one that we just join me, we they talk about the mayor, even Akin Sawyer. And other forty councillors then, now Friton, a request. He asks the minded transfer of Festus Calley, when at the chief administrator, now the Friton City Council. They say then for transfer, so now that's what they talk about today. Triple A, the Friton City Council. It's been very highly controversial since this administration can a power, we all know that. And this also hidden secret, we not say. When the city council, headed by another political party, the mayor, belongs to the A P C party. And you get the central government. When at the local government, headed by another political party. It will likely result to this, we not therefore share away from these things. Clearly, Triple A, when you go back to some of the topics the way they bring come, now this for all. Politics, corruption, and lack of patriotism are in poor with country. All other things then are just secondary issues, but when you want deep, where one dig deep. So the things that way poor with country, and then three things yeah, then three factors yeah, one, politics. Second, you talk about corruption, and then you talk about on patriotism. All until you all we talk so, where you look at them critically, it gets some bearings. Within three elements yeah, corruption, politics, and lack of patriotism. Well, Triple A, we get three sides of the argument, where you look at the old scenario. Three sides of the argument, you get the mayor, your own side of the argument, when Akin Sawyer. Supported by forty councillors then, now Friton, yeah? Forty councillors support the mayor, for let them transfer the chief administrator. Then at one side that one day, what's at the other side? You get the chief administrator in your account. Although we don't listen to the chief administrator in our account, but it's being backed here. By the deputy mayor of the Friton municipality. When you listen to the audio critically, you go not say the deputy mayor, eh, they in favor. Of the chief administrator, where now, uh, Festus Calley. And what's in at the third side of the argument, the local government. The local government minister, where now, uh, Lamita Malamina. You listen to your own side of the argument, so it's like these three parties. If you want make your analysis, you want make your judgment, you therefore look at those three critical parties. Cause it's like, each one eh, get your own side of the story, get your account with he. Okay, now what I would do, I go look at each one and then analyze them. What you may think, cause this is about critical perspective, about critical, you therefore look at them from a critical lens. Forget about, put away your, 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 your politics, your party, and think about it in a critical lens. And also we not get all the information we require, especially so when the chief administrator in your account not there. But the deputy mayor in your account will help we for make some thorough analysis here. Okay, uh, Triple A, let's start with the, the, um, deputy mayor. Where they on the side of the chief administrator, when I Festus Calley. When listen to the deputy mayor, he say, not only to document them. Where the chief administrator refuse for sign. And you go on for talk about a DVD, uh, defeat funded project, where money business danger. We all know say money day, where you talk about donor business, money business danger. So somebody go begin ask, you know, what's he happen with that money day? Cause we all know say, that money day now for fund the iCloud. When our internet service for help, for monitor property, we belong to the council. And then you get that transfer station, we therefore do with the tricycles. So he say two, so you were beginning to ask the question, he say two, say two. But we all know say, eh, you know, a lot of controversy, a lot of challenges done in there. Down there inside the council form term, where this government take over power, yeah, a lot of controversy. Down there go on for a very long time, and he come out there, the deputy mayor come out there. You know, he talks eh, he said this not get nothing for do with politics, I'm not sure about that. But he say not get nothing for do with politics, because the chief administrator been done there, eh, even before. This particular power, and that the chief administrator was appoint or was appointed. Under the A P C regime, that's your argument that, so he believes to a very large extent. This not get nothing to do with politics, yeah, now you on account that. He say you know politically motivated. Now, Triple A, if you listen to the mayor in your account, yeah? The mayor talks, he don't tell where they report their issues here. To the Minister of Local Government, says don't take, yeah, now one of the thing that are the, where I take note of. He say don't take severally, when somebody say severally, not to say now one or two. Boku boku term, they don't report this matter to the, uh, Minister of Local Government. But the local government minister not do anything about it. One go begin think, say the local government is problematic. Cause if somebody, and to be honest with you, we all listen to what in local government minister say. Silent here, they take time, how long you go carry on with this kind of investigation, where you know say. It's so detrimental to the council that, you need for try for speedily. And when I say speedily, for let bring this thing into conclusion, because it is all the council. Into this repeat, yeah, they disrupt the activity of the city council, yeah? So you go begin the old, the Minister of Local Government into account. And this conference, press conference, where they go. Eh, the highlights, I think about almost twenty issues there, where they raise. Where, uh, the mayor within forty councillor they raise, it's a lot of other issues there where they raise. We range from the refusal of the chief administrator for introduce. Performance, for performance management issues, performance management issues, critical issues. Very critical issues, yeah? And that then say one term, any chief administrator don't lead the strike. Or resist the property tax reforms. We all know what in the happen, then ten and day, property reforms, and say now you need that resistance there. Yeah? And say so many other issues then, where lead to a shut off. Um, managed situation between the mayor. And that of the chief administrator, and that the chief administrator not a talk to the mayor. For almost eight weeks. And don't forget, this now two important people then, at the council. Remember, the chief administrator now in the head of all the administrative functions at the council. While as the mayor, now in the political head, now the council. So then two people here, now they talk to each other. Imagine if administrator not sign a document. It's very difficult for letting document indeed come into effect, or any actions where they intend for take. Relating to that document for like comes into effect. So in other words, then they kill the council, then they kill the progress of the council. Yeah, that is basically the truth. So this is not the side of the argument of that of, uh, the mayor. Backed by forty other councillors then, a free term. Then listen to the local government, before I speak to the issues then, not listen to the local government minister. When at Tamba Lamina. He say. That letter. Where the mayor and the other forty, uh, other forty councillor then sign, they all sign. For the transfer of the chief administrator in origin offices, and I the first thing. And that the procedure. Where. The mayor with other forty councillors then take. You know, correct. Especially so, where one of the councillors, when a Unisha, go straight to the media. For go talk about issues rather than then talk to around us. They say you not correct, and that the other thing. And that it a talks say, now for put the interest of the country false, yeah? But the question I will ask is, uh, AAA. I think you raised that point, very, very sensitive. To a very large extent, I believe so. Where you see the councillors then say now, go to the extent for go straight to the media. It could be that they don't settle for the complaint to the local. Uh, cans, uh, the local government minister without actions, because it's clearly. Same here, on the basis of the fact that this man say he don't carry out an investigation. And you listen to the question where I think Kadija asked. Of ninety-eight point one FM, yeah, say, you don't they carry out the investigations here for so many times. It be for too long, we not see any outcome from these investigations. So clearly, it shows say there is lack of. You know, the local government minister. He contribute to a very large extent to this animosity within the council. Because if something happen, as an effective leader. One of the things that way you go for try, now for try for remedy the situation once and for all. Or start for, as soon as something begin, now for try, for let do them once and for all, for let settle them once and for all. But the fact that let this thing they prolong, it don't they build up, don't they build up for a very long time. So when it explode, they really explode, now would they see so, ah, yeah? It could be that then people had a lost patience. So consequently, then take to the media, say because, you know, we have been complaining this. And nothing has been done, so this time round, we need to come out stronger. Against the ministry, they're not go talk them, they're not go talk them, but if you know man way they think. A little bit outside the box, you go no say, now that, um, then you try for arrive at. AAA. To be honest with you. One thing no more, where I think she a little bit disappointed with the mayor. I don't know if that is the case, but if I understand, I think say. All in T I O go take place at the party office, I believe. I think APC party office, and if I'm not lying. A little bit disappointed with that. That is politically oriented. Uh, issues like this should not be discussed in the politi- in, in, in the party of office. Should be dealt with within the, uh, the, uh, Freetown Municipal Policy, uh, offices. One of the offices if possible. So now one of the things then we are critical about this. Um, inasmuch as we all don't look at the three sides. In my view, in my view, uh, AAA, one of the major contributors to this. Now the Ministry of Local Government. And if you listen, if you very good, if you are a good listener. You listen to Eon submission, the Minister of Local Government. It not help the situation at all. Yeah, and he is also skeptical, skep- very much skeptical about the actions. Where the councillors then take in terms of going public. Yeah, in, um, this matter, yeah? But now the same man will contribute to this, we don't listen to him so many, many times, AAA. Where they come out, talks say, they carry out an investigation, this time he's talking about a total investigation. Total investigation, yeah? Total investigation, how long will it take for this man to come out with the result of investigation? How long would only a read this? You ask these questions, how long would only a read this? Say, it investigate the matter and it come out, it come out very shortly. When this thing will happen. Make no mistake, AAA, the Minister of Local Government, he contribute to a very large extent. To issues like this, especially where it involve with the mayor. Where a member of another political party, if we all resolve this matter. Very quickly, yeah? And then secondly, very, very important, uh, AAA. When you think about politics, I know say a lot of people, I mean, they talk say. You know, me, me now one of them, I get a strong conviction, a strong view. That separating local councils from party politics will be the best option for earlier. I know say a lot of people, they say this is not true, yeah? We as civil unions then, we therefore understand our politics don't poor the country. Yeah, everything has been politicized. I believe when you talk about the local council, you talk about the chairman, then now, you talk about councillors, the mayors then. Yeah, if they make them people here become independent. Yeah, content on independent basis. To a very large extent, some of their issues here, oh, the tea, yeah, and go stop. Some of their issues here, because when you look at the ranko, yeah? Where they happen right now, it's like one party against another party. Yeah, a lot of things that where they happen, yeah? In terms of the local government, it's like the local government vice source the central government. Uh, 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 or the, the, the government where they in power. Now the way that we need to look at them. So the best option here is, I deh argue at this platform today. I know say, on several occasions, you don't bring that topic here, now this platform, we don't debate on. On the issue of separating local councils from party politics. And a good number of the people argue saying no, enough of this, yeah? But to a very large extent, we don't see so many issues that where they arise, yeah? Remember the other term, we talk about, um, the property money tax. Where let me talk about, when you look at government minister, they come back in the form of press conference. Where it been talks say, Ingo look into that, and that. You know, the mayor for don't do a lot of sensitization on the property tax issue. That you know do a lot of sensitization, and that you therefore carry out some other investigation, thirty, you know, anything. If you dig deep on these issues, these issues are all politically motivated. All politically motivated, yeah, politics, it poils alone. Let no mistake, politics, it poils alone. And this local government minister, yeah? He contribute to a very large extent. These issues should have been resolved before it explode to this point. And me go tell you, if you not take time, nothing not go come up on this, nothing not go come up on this. Yeah, because if you listen to, if you are a critical thinker, you listen to, uh, the Minister of Local Government, yeah? It's like, look a little bit skeptical. You look, in fact, a bit, a little bit skeptical, it's very skeptical. Yeah, because if they try for talks say. The chief administrator gain no responsibility. He gain power within the local council, yeah? And that you get for look at them critically from a national perspective, yeah? And that the issues that were there within the council, then go far beyond. Me no say go don't see the issues, eh, but officially. You know, maybe you will say, you know, see that letter where the mayor and the other councils are right. Because the way I addressed the matter, it's like you don't see what, he said the issues then go far beyond. What in the councillor, he talk, and what he then he talk. So there are more issues, there is something where me and you. And what in the other listener, they do listen to, where they don't know, there are other issues underneath. But why you not don't address this issue, you know say they are serious challenges. They are serious issue within the council, why you not don't try for address these issues as urgently? And as effectively as possible. All the time, you can on social media, you talk say, you will try for address their issue as quickly. And as thoroughly as possible, we need results. We need the outcome this time round. So I will stop here, like give chance to me fellow panelists them. Thank you very much AAA, and thanks to everybody willing listening to the program.
Thank you very much, Usman Tholi.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. That now, Usman Tholi, Eon submission for today. If you just to join me, welcome on board, we talk about Freetown City Council. We ask a question for saying a political sabotage. Or not just administrative disagreement, or a misunderstanding. Yeah, now we the deal with today. Cause Freetown City Council on the spotlight again. And where they can take the spotlight so well, you already know, how it can turn out for me. So they come with the panelists them, we don't come with Usman Tholi, make we come with Uswend, make we agree, what in Uswend get for we today. Yes, Uswend, you're welcome, sir, you get the platform.
Yeah, thank you very much AAA for giving the platform, and thanks to all your listeners and viewers them. And thanks again to Mister Usman Tholi for his contribution regarding the issue of the mayor and the, the, the. The, 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 the chief administrator at the city council, they go up to the local government, the minister. They come down to the councillors then. Um, I'm not go, go straight away for accept say, I mean, I mean for just, uh, for take I want to say, okay, I sabotaged. An adminis- an administrative misunderstanding. But they're all are there, these are all there actually, so but it depend now, the, 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 the percentage of them. And how it is impact of watching that the proof, the thing would it happen? Uh, the, the one one at the subject matter now regarding a development with defeat. With and they call now Foreign Commonwealth and Development Office, then they try for help. Um, so basically there are, then there is something who is not active. Now more passive work they come from the other side, but we don't know why. In other words, the one who they not put to try, then they for sign them thing there, when I the chief administrator. Would it get a kind of, um. They, they, they bring up point and fact then, from the one side, there is a fact say, the chief administrator. Not the actually one for sign certain things then, where they go towards development. And development now for the city, when at the urban city. Alright, so it looks say, you will decide to find out why you know for do them. Is it because you know, it now maunow, who not good for listening and support? Because when you they work in a group, in a kind of administrative setup. In a local setup, in an organization, anywhere you therefore get, uh, listening and support. You know, where we, the way they go complain, they talk to somebody, then somebody they give you support. So now they do, if you, if you will be support, it can be an advice. The support can be for say, well, no do this, the support can tell you say, now so it they go. But so far, from few facts, then we would all get. We will bring up say the evidence with the, is useful somehow. But for that, we will draw parallels then between them things, and then I bring with a lot of one, we will wait for say. We not a look for say, nah, something with fibula like this, or because the fibula like this. Or because this man, the elector, or this man, you don't go do this. So therefore bring up those fact, they will say, no, why the man no one for sign them thing there? We bring about all this to grow, we bring about this way away, then it will forget a solution for them to solve them. Then at one point, he will say the man will listen, okay, he will say, but to active listener. From where the onlooker based on the fact we don't get on one side. But because we know, we will base a rare fact from an other side. Would they say, well, how are these numbers gonna crop together for even can make up and, and as evidence you not get? Because the other side of the evidence come on, are people they wouldn't see, they need something, who they not get. They get projects that who they no one get, they will get one way, bring another fact say. When the project then, now, now regarding the bike, now regarding some other things, they wouldn't be useful, then we move the tip. From one end to the other, okay, now decide where they dispose them. So here you go look, say, okay, i- if not that now he, then go further for say, how this year go look get work? In other words, if they sell in case, the man where can is, I, he, he decide for selling case. We've been doing ninety-eight point one, they, they, they act for quite a long time. If they sell in case, in the case where me want for sell there, the, the chief administrator go buy. Now the evidence before say, this year we did do, he go replicate, he go pull one, he go make it big. So that when we for go before, we don't get in time. So he don't sell in case that way they, but when you look, say the man who like the man who is, they put in time of this. According to laws, you know, he for did it, doing the, the process, the chain work from here, you go here. They possibly go writing project, the project don't mature, all the final thing is just to give it a signature. That if you want for make a comparison with something where the government they do want them. Um, then get the one who we say that one was a last of, that, um. Um, N C C, I didn't call them, um, they get, they get one where they give them force. For say this way, it look different first from what he will give for given up on the score. This way another threshold, yeah, the threshold one, where they give you now. So that you go therefore start up, not to the score one, for let you not face, okay, they don't do that program then a long they have, about it. Then say that one day, they don't begin to collect money now, from the market, then they make money. So they say, then they make money from a for replicate other program. Alright, would I ever go for go stop, ah, nobody obviously go stop that project. So I think now, if something else again, they, uh, a particular institution, whether the Freetown City Council. Then they try to say, do I for make them thing they have for let them do? What say you, the man where the chief local, the local government administrator? Then they try to say, do I for make them to do, what say you, the man where the chief local, the local government minister you for do now? You get for find out fact, you bring us all this fact, you know say, this is a project, then there is a case going on there. Then this man who no want sign this here, then my and I, probably they go for go probably money. I therefore go, I go into share for you, I go find out. If many they say, then they go now for go do administrative investigation, that should be, those are the investigation we get for look at. Because when you go, you go look for say, you go indirectly for get evidence. It's very, very difficult, because sometimes the evidence where you try for get, it looks separate from the fact where they do. The fact where they do is that something for develop the environment for make it go before. Because now that now the primary aim of this is, where then they call now the F C D O, what are foreign commonwealth. Now money then we don't put, then put them from two thousand thirteen, two thousand six, they get out in beginning projects then they. So it's up to you for there, you will get an organization, you look for say, that's um, gee, and that, I don't see him. He get, he get um palm fruits they would not rep, how are we able for reach them? And if palm fruits, then they been useful for later can make palm oil, you careful making ways through. Then you make your ways to go get them, that was what the mayor don't do. The projects then they did, they re-announce them by Mike, you have to be creative for let you able know. Would I then know this, they not say we are for education, they can't grab the young. Why you know they grab the education young, why you know they grab the other areas they young? Why you know they grab and stop the one they for develop the young, beginner and what are women? Then why now that they stop the one way, this wire, that's the one they will give, and they say, you know they give. That the one they want for sign let the thing go give a good before, we call that the formality. Just like what I be say, the president need for sign this, for let the flag go and other things, just the authority. So if a question all these things for say, this is what the minister, the minister therefore look, now you have for go look in task. You you know, in task force, who think the authority of even task get? And the authority of the task back what the 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 mayor get? And then the authority, what the 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 chief administrator get? Then you look the local council and the council of wasting, now they no responsibility. Then you know, can I for beginning research, how you will able for know which question, and I if I they go for go ask, yeah, now, ah, they go ask this regarding the investigation. I don't just go no more, I go, I therefore make a plan, I know all these areas are put in done. Then I will able for at least all what is now the subject matter. And the subject matter, I have the experience to see, something there is, where then be not say, in the replicates, so so to where don't when they do this. You can for go, you go find out this fact, you put it on your table, you don't go touch nobody. And then we don't have to define why, they usually identify weaknesses. Because you now don't get a case, what they bring to you, you they don't bring to you, why you get weaknesses then? It's like you get weaknesses from a random place, they come in where they don't come up so. Those are the thing we get for do, and then we don't prepare a questionnaire for go, what they guide are now. Then I tell him, he goes say now, make a go, get million case, that will get material there, then I call the parties, then I decide. But if any layman will look to this, he will fix it, let the project, he goes say, brad, right this year, where you go before? Because those are the areas, who don't, who don't be the developmental stage in salon. Where there is actually a criteria which is good, but that comes from enough person before see. Things has to go from this policy, it goes through this policy, it goes, it goes state by state, state by state. Before it will reach side where they go sign now. So then the project is not fifteen years project, they don't put money, money then we cut down. Because there is a fear say, now, now project money will don't date. Also money working for Canada, you know, because now the UK, now yesterday, two days ago, then depends. What what one a parlament, for this this money, I will be different, this fear I feel, when we cut down up to five billion pounds cut. Some people, they say, now you know members, then they, then you know party, they're not green. But now let's that's why they, this money what we don't do, you don't put on, we say that from this time to this time. So that's one who now they can't for can't see can't. That is what I think for system they don't do, but when you let this say, these things are not they happen. Then you go, they find out say, now what thing in the trap for bring, in the trap for put things now in the say, in trial by media. Okay, trial by media, it remind you of the press act. What they don't just pull out, what say, there is a freedom of act, uh, the 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 press. That is why they bring back that, in the trap for say, the press not get freedom, they not get rights for do this. But when you see certain things because of the culture and the way people and the and the woman, a feminist type. They always say, I don't have a backbone, maybe I'm feeling, uh, I'm not secure, I I no get standing like a man. So that's psychology, you might say, I'm not saying you might say, maybe that's why it mistaken it go. For what say, relax, go tell something, then why I then go help? It might be a different approach in go, but that's I don't go that side there. For that, you might still say, now that, now the way where it was, you see, well, they they not bring out the case, where instead way before reflect. Or let's go say, let them deal with this year according to the culture way it did, according to the law. So in other words, the media has the the right for let them go do this, because they have no area where they will see. The pillar of democracy is not covered then, the pillar of democracy, now in that the one where they don't raise up, where they call the 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 Dravonian law. So in the trap for bring the Dravonian law in a different way, for say, the man don't go do trial by media. All he has to do, ignore that, because you don't mostly, there has been continuous. You go find out how long would the man, the woman don't miss a Monday, how long this they don't complain, how long the letter they don't write? Before even you go taxi, now trial by media, what you don't go do and now, you not get that one there. But when you talk that one day, you not go able for say, who's in the constitution, we cover now. When you go there, that means you don't go against the 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 draconian law. Because that is what he's trying to sound, the hope is on term, these leaders are going to approach some of the things, so that they go able for help. Salon for go before, some of the things they have to fast track them, they don't follow the essence of the things there. It it, deciding is holding me, what's the difference where that Monday for what was telling now? It's part, if we just, here you change say, there is an authority, you want to try, looks aside in there, when I when I squeeze. It's like when the developments, in in they try for make salon, all man they have, without try come on at this stage here. Will they get a credit for them too, will not go get their funds there, the the population, they go get other things, allow they get things for go before. So that things they get for, we don't push on, let them come, we will say, they pull there, we don't go affect this. In in the end of the day, i- if even we say the mayor, let you sign a law, put it like that way. Or let the minister, okay, come, I can sign up for you, not put it that way then by fact. If the the final product, is it gonna affect the people? Now go there, they can't tell you that, or or on a, on a, on a, on a, na 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 na, so doing harmful. This is something, it's not how they manage actually, if they manage this type crisis, then when the one they make, then they give them. When a collective responsibility and then personal responsibility, then I will just not sign that, what they get for look to. But this case, I believe say, let the minister, he try do all them things there. They avoid the media who for for talk about the media, who say they are right, make you look to the case, before them. And then let the politicians and leaders in land for be active listeners, by listening and supporting. We know will say, not political fact, because it doesn't like, I'm doing the term of this, but people are not reliable sometime, they might transform. But there is evidence of the vice, it has, it give them go pull small from the deputy um mayor. Who's I in taxi now because of that thing there and that for anything there. But even that will become one, the not for anything there, anything there, the man don't sign there, that is what you should have asked yourself. Before you make the order for, she that woman don't go no under, they say one for push her inside. You go for access, you you know what thing they do, you go for say, what they think there, the young man pull it, don't let the other man on the other side, we talk about that. But in all the time for she now, what they close there and this. Thank you very much for giving me the platform, and hope these are gonna be the way, where they will do a holistic approach, that God will therefore help that continue for go before. Thank you very much, and let God help them listen to me, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you very much, Uswend.
Yeah, you was welcome, sir.
Yes, sir. Well, that's Uswend in submission, make we come with Tony, make we, are you waiting to get for we today? Yes, Tony, you get the platform, sir, welcome on board.
Yeah, Abraham, um, thanks for having me, uh, Kushe and Cabo Fambule. You ask the question, say, if you facing a sabotage, or what in they call the C, it's right for do, I'm not facing a sabotage. I feel say, the whole thing center around ego, you understand? The the deputy um um um, the deputy um um mayor say a lot of things, then we if want for pick out some sense. And left in the the one we not make sense, we will get a clue. And most of the things then we'll see, you understand, we have to say, their approach and they could be the best. Let's say you have a CEO, I know this is an historic problem, they've come a long way with this tussle and all from when the cleaning starts. You all, we we is me don't the see, who side the the mayor and the CEO, they get logo heads, you understand? Me, I know Festos Cali, we all meet in Kono together, he was the CEO in Kono win. Diana Kono money was the 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 chairperson for Kono, he's a nice gentleman, you understand? He's he's a really nice gentleman, we don't interact, we don't, you know, we don't so many times and everything. We have to say that to somebody, when a difficult person, where you talk about somebody, we proud or cocky, where you had for break. The the this, 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 the 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 mayor, the the head, you understand, of Freetown. But you get the one way, they interro the administrative, where account, where they they where they account for every forms, for everything that is happening. It's just like when you have the permanent secretary and the ministers them, where it's simple. Everybody swallow your pride and see how they give for 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 gets, I mean, on the same page. This is for Freetown, the certification of Freetown, and it's a good project, where we no see as the the effort clean the city and everything. I'm not feel say, it will be that wicked. You as, there are certain times, somebody has to be the bigger elephant in the situation, somebody has to calm down, somebody go for the. Before the minister, I feel say, before they even the the state, the councillors, then they go sign a document, say, you don't want this. It's like first and foremost, meet the CEO and invite them to a meeting. Say, I feel say, I mean, just like I say, it's not that, not to like, like how me and you they talking, Abraham, I saw me and and Festos Cali they talk. You understand, I'm not, not to personally difficult. On a column, he's a young guy, he's a very young guy, not to even old power, he who says and say, he a cake and he thinking, or probably aged on the tail. Would I invite him, you get councillors, then when a young man they back, we did when a young man, a young woman, they, on a column, say, bad this thing. No can, no for, let's try compromise, let's see how best we can for solve this problem. If they see, if the, if the 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 mayor and the the owner and the CEO they get issue, on a law, say, law, for instance, for example. Then can be the peacemaker and say, okay, mayor, wait, let we see how we can bring one guys together and bridge the divide. Festos Cali, not so, I know they say, I'm just like, where did the the deputy mayor say? Festos Cali, now like, like, now like, epic picking, I will see. He he gets good relationship, just like what you said, Festos Cali don't the under, before even S A P P. Festos Cali, now like, like, Joanne Basue, now me former eh eh epic eh eh ambassador. When I mean, when I mean, the former chairman of Kono, we left and Diana Kono money candidate, that's when Festos Cali was the chairman, now I'm the CEO of Kono. And I'm getting problems, then they, you understand, I feel say, it just, we were then came for strike compromise. If Festos Cali, they be that difficult, before he even go late complaining, go all meeting our A P C office. You know exactly the rule, you understand, and call them, and anyway you know say, now people, they were there born with Festos. Excellence, I mean, simple, if this one I mind, they go difficulties, oh, they go at times. You understand, I mean, then I keep, I keep, and compromise. For the betterment of salon, we not go for the go, this this, look everything, like say, it's politics and this and. There are certain times, then they, yes, it's politics, but in this kind of situation, you understand, somebody go for be the bigger elephant in the room. Calm down and tell them, and see, because it's a flagship project of the of the mayor. If the man, would I go for us, don't look in on the whole thing now. If me and the mayor are got a flagship project, I'm not say, it's a success, if that thing they not a success. We are no an accurate, we go go to them, if the thing become a success, you go for swallow your pride, swallow I mean candle. And the time for say, hey, me man, you not like a brother to me, this and this and this, if you don't understand, we don't walk in office, office, then we get bureaucracy. Get them, but to next situation, I mean, there is a lot of bureaucracy, you see departments and departments, they know they put. But once it come to the furtherance of 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 the company, or the furtherance of projects, or for you, for the development of of Freetown City Council. Somebody has to calm down, somebody go for calm and say, this is not about minister, and and me like, we stand with the minister take. Because if the minister calming just now, what if people then go begin to look at, they say, oh, now because, you understand, now because, nah 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 nah. Now S A P P minister, they they try for calming for any impulse and what in they call, they have to be more matured enough for handle this situation. They will be, the Freetown City Council is not only the only Freetown, the only council that we have, we have twenty two, Freetown City Council. Why we not get them complaining, fighting, and fighting in all the councils? You understand, somebody has to be that kind, somebody we go say, eh, bro, I'm me man, if you don't understand, go knock nine door. We've worked in a institution, that's the culture, the culture, that night money do, if I not see nothing wrong with the mayor gonna money, that night money do. Let no get audience, or let go to somebody say, hey, me man, I see where they get difficulty, then somebody they work where. At the same message that they calling, not respond, at sex, I say, me man, we get any issue, any problem, they lost, to those, to those, iron and house. Because me want for let me all walk go before, let me all walk down. I come to, I went on the plaque, I come to say, me man, what's in the problem, we get any issue, any misunderstanding, I bet there, for the work for that we go go before. I want let you help me do this, or do this, or do this, if the man who understand. Now you go for put some don't see, okay, probably you don't understand what's in the thing. Make, we we make to clarify things, they make to understand, we say, look, we do on the same page, you understand? But many a times, when you look at situation, this is not about politics, even at the private sectors. These things then they happen at the private sectors, you see people then where all money make big, all mouth you say. Or if you say the coin at the mayor, or if you say the coin at the CEO, or if you say this, or the one mouth show, Sabi Sabi, all mouth, you say, Elambo pass, he copied. And well, you know, there are things that they happen, so me, I don't go blame the minister, you understand? If therefore go to that point, we are in like a, this particular point, then they can intervene, they can come in and resolve the issue. But they are big, they are mature people, they are mature, just because they say, Festos Cali has been there before, S A P P not having kind of power. Not only because he carries a middle name or whatever, he has been there, this is a guy where. He got very good relationship with big guns there with inside the party, with the inside the same A P C party. Where now they, now the party, eh 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 eh, the mommy, they they represent, it's that people, and they talk to us, say. You understand, I know how it to get to same point, but I feel say, now just ego, somebody know how for calm down, everybody they act tough, everybody they make this. And the poor people then, where they work now, where they work, where they do the work, where they dinner the foreigners, where they clean the city, and I think they suffer, and then their family for take yours. These people have families, they are working out without pay, they were going home, every day, I promise, now what, when I go get, when I pay. I'm so, I'm I'm I'm, I they sympathize with them, not them where they act up, I they sympathize with the poor people, and where they do their job, and then they're not being paid. You know, somebody therefore calm down, they made it, I feel say, they see and not get anything for those, because in they do, what he is supposed to do. Just like how this audit service do this, do this, do this, you understand? Now you what can they do, at the end of the day, when audit on the camp, is the one they're gonna have questions, you understand, that now me will take, Abraham.
Thank you very much, Tony.
You welcome, Abraham.
Yeah. Well, we want to say thanks to we panelists them, we contribute for today on program. You already listen to your opportunity now, if you get anything for add, I waiting, we don't lay in our table. Two three two seven eight nine nine zero nine nine one, now WhatsApp, two three two seven eight nine nine zero nine nine one, now WhatsApp. You can call direct United States or United Kingdom, United States now one, six four six six one zero three one zero seven. Or United Kingdom now four four seven three nine eight zero three zero four zero two. The four lines them open now, unless if we don't do good, then within the next five minutes, we will close the line, if nobody know the for call. Freetown City Council. A political sabotage or a administrative misunderstanding? You there, are you from the different sides then? Are you from the mayor? Are you from the deputy mayor? Are you from the councillors? Are you from the minister? The only person who know are you for, are from the chief administrator. And they kicking game steady. Well, when the time reach, we go here you from them. But for now, I guess eh, nobody not touch I hate. Nobody not touching Co- Coit, so, not see. As in the deputy mayor, he said they say for impeaching, say, now I make, he go making audio one thing. See, they say, they say don't pass, they say don't, they say me say say for go. Deputy mayor, in the inside for grip, he not talk your way, no. Where are you for me? What? You are, they say for transfer, until in, they not say for impeach, they say transfer. So because something they say for impeach, the deputy mayor, he say, they say, in a impeach, then they impeach ah. Now I make you go making audio, so you know, ah, you can't agree, you can't impeach me now, yeah, I see you. Okay, but we want common sense for prevail, now this situation. Okay, okay, this corner. Yes, caller, I can turn down with you to listen to your answer, please?
Hello, triple, how are you?
No, but, yes, you get three minutes, waiting a contribution.
Me, now, most of the call from, eh, New York.
Okay.
The contribution no more, I get two thing, I therefore contribute to. One, are they big who panelist them? When they give them forum for talk, no, not decide, people, and most of the talk in the way, people, and they talk and decide. Things, I don't know if they know, one side stories, not ever help. Then second, this mayor is in, ah, 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 Freetown. And it cause serious problem, now, now Syria lean right now. One, now make the government, they don't see. Let them pull all kinds, eh, 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 mayor, mayor, business, city council, or whatever thing, let them pull on that politics. Let them privatize that. If this government, I possibly, we be want for do bad. I believe say, it not go bring up that idea, because they didn't see, I didn't see. Every mayor will go on that party ticket, we rule on that party ticket, always want for satisfy in party. And have the fiercest, or tell them, they ruled, then landed for take for campaign for the party there. Which is wrong, they're forgetting that the people of Syria, they get for support, and then they then get for sour. This issue between the, the, the CEO and the, the, the mayor, they really need for investigator, no, not blame the, the, the local government minister. If it don't happen, inside, eh, eh, turn on me, it's a mo, it did, the small fracas go between the, eh, eh, turn on me and the mayor. The whole country become, eh, 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 G three over, then they begin course, eh, turn on me, I would, I would, they feel. The mayor on a private policy, I ain't get a city, I ain't get this, I ain't get that. So then, they, they, they complicate issues there, and Salomon quick. We were not, it's not if a politics, now who they say, now who they put, now who they explain how politics done. So if they don't decide, there two people, yeah, they, eh, this say, now, now they are, they're, it didn't add a council, they. For represent the, 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 the administration, where they, then you the mayor, can you get your, your municipality? If we not get fracas, when I say, say, go meet the, the, the local government minister, for make it down on a, it make table for, 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 for. For say, come on, just like the last, eh, eh, analyst you talk, see, this all my ego, now cause that be. Because they don't hide this woman so much, that anything where he say, now that country not natural, he don't talk. As long as, now something he talk, now Freetown, now true, he lie now, he not lie now, now true, he say. So they really go for take the time, they go for decide between the two people and me. Because that man get the your role, the, the mayor back get your role. Though two, then they decide the gov, the, 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 the government of the day. Then the, the mayor, they sell the municipality, eh, in party, they going a party policy. Even though this man don't dinner, that, that council, they before, he says, say, they can't, they never pull out. So then they get, they be careful how they do, that's a cool attitude. So me, now, then they see.
All right, thank you very much, Musa.
Yeah.
Think we get another call? I'll see, what are these? Not the phone line don't close, okay, that follow, that too. Yes, caller, I live on here, you name another side of the call from, please?
Oh, I call from New York, there's no Musa, gone.
Yes, you get ten minutes.
Okay, just in regard to what they going right now. To me, I sometimes I wonder, what you know, how, how the, the mayor, how. Con, the amount of control within key, and with the constitution, or whatever, could we the use for control that city there? Because sometimes it look too tight, because being an encounter, we know say, mayor, now they controlling city. Even the governor, not so get, not, not he can impose on the mayor in city like that. But we not know this back and forth, Alex, possibly one deny say, oh, not to politics. But the way things they go, you must go for wonder why, if this not the politics. You cannot know how much concentration the mayor belong to, eh, the administration, where they control whatever they want. But to me, this go for be a political chess of something. Because there is no way, thing like this, because in the man, where they mean interview, I see, for put politics aside, for build the nation. So, and the other speaker, I've been talking about, oh, now ego. So I do wonder, would I get ego now, if you already know, see, this is not the politics, you always try for being at the good side, you are the administration, like where you read this. Like when I say, oh, the mayor for don't call him, instead, instead for wear the big pants, or even call the mayor, say, this not to show, not to show this what happened. But more meet and talk, everybody, both say, we settle this, but nobody, now they put the country first. Everybody they put new ego, and forget, or may, maybe party interest, forget the middle man, we not the country. And the people there, we, then they govern. So at, all the time, the Syrian union, no policy, not the way they work for the Syrian union. Government and they do policy there, we, not they work for the, for the, for the people there, we, they really get the brunt of the pain. But then they will make policy, the way they attract foreigners then, for can enjoy our country, but only will do for we say, what he will make we enjoy. We rather please extra people then, and we think in pain me more nowadays, we are there, read the old slogan, say, Saloman like stranger. To me, that are bullshit right now. The stranger business, stranger, don't, don't, they misuse the country, we still like them. So, not to, we not go for hate them, but we for come first. So this mayor business, or whatever chief administration, where they go, and I feel say, therefore put country first, but what's in the happening right now? The politicization of every nook and cranny in our country. Don't be a blind to everything, every positive goal, where somebody want make. And then they forget, always say, and they do have for country. I don't care whose party we day, if you able do right, people then they know, like you put at the end of the day, and you put then they, then, then they vote. The people that are there for be the part, they not, even the leader, for make you call leader, part, or father of a nation, you for be push too much. Because we not even get, eh, 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 par, you know, they call president par, and they call nobody, our minister, who is here no more par, no. Me, nobody, not, 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 get no parole on that country, because par for know, how begin the show up. If you know, you don't know how you possibly, the way they control, we for call you par, others suffer, then you not qualified for be called par. So the idea of par, that is to me, not uncalled for. And what they disturb me more, this big man, small man mentality, where they happen in our country. You don't really bring me down, we possibly they low, you want feel low too much, you know, you will stand, you know, you will get in pride, you know. I not just need for be a small man here, again, me all right, where somebody know they're not, and Syrian union, we see get small position. He de go, he de go head over here with that, with that small thing, they, even brother, they will come on FBC. Just because they get the winner, see, and they talk to lower people there. The smaller one, they will not get, and me don't get that experience, they being back home. With, I get a friend in brother, we, we, we come on FBC, just because I come on FBC. Who do some, uh, something they were being correct, um, you get one slap me, just because in a big person, you say, in a FBC comments. And I think that's bad, and possibly, we therefore begin hold, we own self, self-esteem as small person. I like who not, get, only forget power, for be powerful. You know, we as the individual, as citizens, we already get with power. For the fact that we get, we own authority in that country, now we dish out power to them, people there, now we get the power. If we know that, then we will control them, but as long as we know it will come to that, in the, all this nonsense, where they happen, this fight, and they fight, all man if we say powerful. We be see, obtain their power, now we get, the real essence of power is controlled by the citizens, not those politicians. And we go for do something, for really get we own self-esteem as citizens, and many people don't know see. Now we they control them, not to them, they control we in that regard.
Thank you very much, Musa.
Yeah.
Yeah. Our last caller, Andy, don't spend too much of a time. But like I said, I've been say earlier, we just hope say, um, common sense prevail now. So that the mayor inside, and the chief administrator inside, then go able for see, for work amicably. Um, it's a difficult one. There is no way where you can able point to, oh, well, you see, and this is not the reason we make, um, the, the. This administration, they try for say, for make political party come up and make your business. Another person go tell you, say, well, something I mean, then they said this up, so that we go get a feeling there. So whatever it is, whatever it is. Then guys, they already picked out in our streets, they need their money. They need their money, eh? When I come together, and the local government ministry, when I try do this investigation. Who say this problem they come out, now, now, try for amend them. I wish the councillors, then we don't tell we, then just to tell say, a malice, a malice, I wish they be tell say, we, we say, say, don't go meet her, don't go talk to her. Eh? We don't go meet, they say, we talk to her, you see, you know they do, you know they talk to the mommy, you know they sign, nobody said that, unless you, then probably for put that part to you. But again, you see, back when you say, instead of get power. Eh? Hmm, in Sierra Leone. I got a pu ya? Because if you look back, something again, they see in camp, and they say, the mayor, they make speak, speak too much, they make like, say, now he's a be all team. So look, we some, but look, see, I go work. In every aspect, it's Sierra Leone, you don't doubt? Oh, we some, look, see, we just want now say, now we get the power. The mayor inside back, they say, well, oh, look, see. We go right, say, make them transfer you. I just said, they back and forth. How long? Then they not go mix alone, oh. Then they not go fix alone. Eh? Do ya? Want to see, see, look who fit on. Eighty-five, seven, one, talk. Can't pull, and you know, so it's savvy. Eh? A big, balance, me that side, eh? But I'm a serious note, sir. Please, Madam Mayor, Mister Chief Administrator, let common sense prevail, now work together. I don't know if the peace commission, now they force work, this will get forgiven. Say, city council, eh, then look, they get bang, bang, then I go make peace, they force back. The force work, as they approve peace commission, so they send them go FCC. So the way, we, we, you, you, charm out again, FCC, we go all peace commissions, see, we tune a being good do. All right. Anyway. We will be back tomorrow. Hmm, I'll laugh everything, but, till we meet again tomorrow.